They have visual impairment or hearing impairment. Call for conflicts?
No conflict.
No, okay, Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict. Okay, the hearing procedure, the chairman, we already did that. Staff will present the report. Then applicant will speak and then we will entertain questions from the V O C C.
And then we will allow the public to speak and comment three minutes per person. And we will close the public comment and then we'll call for board discussion and then a rebuttal if one is necessary and then a motion. And at that, we will turn the staff loose on that first file.
There's the public commissioners, good afternoon, Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. On the first file, we're here to discuss this afternoon is his own change from rule five to commercial. Bonner County Revised Code twelve two one six says that staff in the governing body shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there's adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash three twenty point one. Purpose statement of each zone and map designation set forth in the following section shall be a used be used to guide the application of the zone designation of all lands and unincorporated Bonner County. So this is a breakdown of the that particular on purpose statement for the commercial districts broken down into two parts. The part that's highlighted in the blue today is what's a focus of this particular parcel. The Commercial District is established to promote a range of commercial uses to serve the needs and the immediate area surrounding rural communities and visitors without adversely affecting adjacent residential neighborhoods. Part B is use of this zone is appropriate and designated as a neighborhood commercial. The applicant has proposed his own change from rule five to commercial for the purposes of expanding an existing storage facility that has an approved conditional use permit in two thousand and one. The request was evaluated against the standards for the rule five and the commercial districts. The parcel is currently comprehensive plan, neighborhood, commercial. This is a couple of photos of the approved conditionally use permit use as it sits today with the storage units. Part of, well, I'll back up here a little bit. So I previously mentioned this is for the expanding of the addition or for a additional use permit that's already been approved back in two thousand and one. So the code restricts that expansion to ten percent. If it's a nonconforming use, which this is a legal nonconforming use that's happening in a rural five district. So it restricts the property owner to only allowing a ten percent change. That's why we're here today seeking the zone change so the applicant can expand his commercial operation. As we see, this is table twelve dash three three three, our commercial use table in the code. Arrow on the left is pointing to the rural district, which does not allow for rental house or many storage, therefore the expansion would be limited to that ten percent by code. By going to the commercial district and the zone change, he'll be permitted to expand his existing use already. It's noteworthy that this probably should have been captured the time when they revised the zoning code back in two thousand and eight and it's not. And there's other properties throughout the community that are in a similar situation. So these are the standards of review for the rule five. We already know it's developed at or near one dwelling unit for five acres because that's a zoning. In order to get to the commercial zoning, this is the breakdown of the criteria of the purpose statement we were looking at earlier. So we look to see that the land is already designated as neighborhood commercial by the comprehensive plan that there's adequate sewage disposal, adequate water supply, adequate roads, public facilities and services. And it will not negatively impact the safety and function of the state highway or other roads. So some background on this particular parcel, it is a platted lot. It is approximately seven point two acres in size. It is zoned rule five. The current land use designation is neighborhood commercial. Parcel is accessed on Battle Drive, which is a private easement adjacent to Highway forty one, which is in Idaho State paved, owned and maintained right away. So some environmental features and services available at this parcel currently, there's no map slopes on here. So it's a relatively flat parcel. It however does contain a map wetland and a mapped canal ditch. The wetland and the canal ditch file follow this exact same pattern. There is individual well, individual septic. Fire protection is afforded through Spirit Lake Fire District. Powers of this utilities and is within West Pontcharlais School District number eighty three. These are the following agencies that were routed for comment on this file. This is a little bit different than what's found in the staff report. For some reason, in the staff report, the Idaho Department of Fish and Game and Idaho Transportation Department did not show up in the staff report. However, in the agency routing memo is there, we can see that Idaho Department of Transportation it submitted comment along with road, road and bridge. DQ. The following agencies required no comment with Penn Health District, Idaho Department of Water Resources, Spirit Lake Fire and all their, all other agencies did not comment. Public comments were received as of January seventeenth of this year. They are found in your finders this afternoon for your review. Go back to the standards as we looked at this and the few things that we've learned about the parcel, we do know it is already zoned rule five. Then we look to the commercial district to see if it meets those designations, which you can see up here that it does. It has a confined designation of neighborhood commercial. There is adequate water and sewer disposal. There's adequate roads, adequate public facilities and services. And based on the comment from ITV, it won't negatively impact the state highway there. Findings of facts have not changed. This time the staff report was prepared, nor have the conclusions of law. That found that this proposal is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. The zoning commission voted unanimously for recommendation of approval. I agree with my presentations, Commissioner. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Hey, would the applicant like to speak?
Can I ask a question?
Forty nine ninety five.
I ask a question first before we why would it have been designated in the comp plan as and never and the zoning map wasn't updated since like it in two thousand?
So last year, they they decided, I think the applicant, they can speak to us quite better than I can. The brief history I have is they wanted to come in and expand it. They discovered that that comp plan was not done. So they went through the process of having the property re-designated by the comp plan as neighborhood commercial.
Okay, so that's all the designation.
That's a recent change.
Okay, but they didn't do a rezone at that time, just a
No, this is part two of their plan or I don't know if it was their plan necessarily. I think they just want to come and expand. Because they had a conditional use permit, because the code changed since the time of the original C U P. They're unable to expand under today's rules. This code, so they did part one and did the comp plan and now we're here to discuss the zone change.
So the comp plan has already been addressed to make it commercial zone?
Correct, it is neighborhood. Which allows for a commercial zone.
When you look at some of the comments that were given from the public, some reference the wetland area. And a comment was made that it floods during a period of time, which attracts more wildlife. We didn't get a comment. Did anybody reach out to like fishing game or anyone to see? I know that we send out the
So the R B Corr Engineers that regulates that, they're the regulatory body was routed on this.
Just the standard routing though, is what we did.
Correct, for that we do for all our files, Commissioner. It's noteworthy that the canal is a manmade now ditch. It's not natural by any stretch of means, but over time, things become wetlands and they stay wet for quite some time. That's my current education. It doesn't quite show on the screen. We can pull up the map later, but McDonald Creek itself ends further to the east. Across the highway, across this larger parcel here. This is a better, I'm sure I should have done a better screenshot. You would see where the creek actually runs. The natural portion, this is all cut in by man to who I assume allow water to these properties. I would just be venturing to guess on that part of why the canal was created.
Even with a zone change, any additional commercial use added on this property still needs to meet all of the other land regulations, including wetland setback. It's not like we changed the zone and all of a sudden making the fill-in the creek and fill it up.
I understand that my, when members from the community give a comments, what ends up happening is sometimes they want to know the answer to the issue they raised specifically. So that's why I was asking, because one of these letters is specific to a change in not just the wetlands, but wildlife. So I was curious if sometimes that can help with the discomfort if we know a decision's going to be made to reach out to the agency to elicit that comment, even if it's not going to change. I was just curious if anyone reached out because someone was very specific on the actual change in that area.
Correct, so the Corps of Engineers was routed, that is correct.
Routed, and they're the ones who manage wetlands.
Correct. And US Fish and Wildlife is routed as well, Department of Fish and Game. So Fish and Game did respond with no comment. That is correct.
Their little papers in the folder.
So when we get comments in, we tend to stay the same process for every file type. If we switch processes due to, you know, a perceive or some perception, I think there's some potential. You know, you want to stick with the same process. Why treat one file different than another, right? So if we've always followed the same process of sending a routing out to these a list of agencies, then we stick with that same process for every file. I don't want to treat one file different than another, if that makes sense.
That would probably make you all on it.
Right, so to get back to the original question, the planning commission, when they looked at this, decided they had a unanimous recommendation to the board to change the comp plan designation with the idea that this was a commercial use prior to that comp plan being established and the zone zoning map being established. So it should have in their minds been caught during that update and made a commercial use at that time. So it was a unanimous vote to the board. The board saw the same reason and changed the comp plan designation. Previously, this could have been done as a joint file A M Z C file, but with the split of the planning and zoning commission, the comp plan map change goes before the planning commission's own changes go before the zoning commission. So it elongates the process from three months to six months-ish.
Any other questions? The applicant, want to speak? Is the applicant here? Take names for the record.
My name's Dave Yant, I'm current owner of the property. Just a little bit of history on the property we purchased about a year and a half ago from the Petersons. And it was under a conditional use permit with some storage units on it that we've kind of cleaned up a little bit and trying to make them look a little bit nicer. I did read some of the public comments regarding one McDonald Creek Road and the property between this property and McDonald Creek Road is actually not being considered for commercial. In fact, we sold that to my son. He's going to build a house on that, which incorporates most of that water drainage portion of it. So there's no access to this property on McDonald Creek Road. So there won't be any impact to that. It is a manmade channel. We've done a lot of research with the previous owners on really big snowpack. They do get a little bit of water down on the side of that channel that overflow. One of the reasons is because it wasn't manmade very well. Some of the culverts are undersized, so it tends to back up as it hits McDonald Creek Road. It can be dug out a little bit and hire banks, I think, to solve some of that. There's not, not much wetland towards the property that we're speaking of. But other than that, yeah, we went through Idaho Department of Transportation and talked to them about the easements off the highway. Everything else, I think, we're in pretty good shape. Our plan is just, I mean, we're not too well to do. We live here in North Idaho. We understand the way of life and preserving that. We put a website in about seven, eight months ago and we get continuous inquiries for mostly indoor RV type storage. So our thought was, well, we'll put up a building with six units on it and if it fills up and we'll be able to put up another building with six units on it. So not really have any intention of going in there and just covering the whole land. And then we do own the farmhouse right in front, which also comes with the barn that's right behind that. It's around two separate properties. Barn's one hundred and ten years old, so it's kind of a nostalgic thing. But that's just a little bit about the property.
Thank you for that image of the property.
Any questions from the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hey. In favor of neutral? Neutral?
No, we've, no, we've never had a neutral.
No, I think, yeah, I meant Matt Lynn Scott Segal. You know, when we heard this, this file, the zoning commissioner, we already knew that the planning commission had already gone ahead and recomp plan that to neighborhood commercial. You know, and, and so when we look at this, one of the, one of the highlights for me is in the housing component, this is Bonner County shouldn't encourage a mix of residential and commercial uses where appropriate services and access to transportation are available. This is a storage unit, so there, there's no utilities necessary. There's no sewer, there's no water necessary. We have I T D letter from I T D, if I'm not mistaken, and they, they already permitted it. For us, it didn't seem like an issue at all. It met the comp plan. It's, it's not in conflict with comprehensive plan. So that's what we gone ahead. And again, I think we also were unanimous, if I'm not mistaken, in approving this on change, so.
Thank you for coming. It does help when someone who was on the board comes in, presents that perspective.
Anybody again? Other than what we've had, so. Okay, then at this point, I will close it for public comment and we'll discuss it amongst ourselves. Anything to discuss? Any questions?
Steve, and before, this is being the first rodeo for the two, our two commissioners. You guys have probably heard me say the shtick that I'm about to give you already, if you've been to some of these before, but and by the way, my name is Bill Wilson. I'm the attorney for the board tonight. And I would just like to give a bit of advice as we jump into these things. Your first and biggest obligation is to consider this application against the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. So accordance with the comprehensive plan means that it's in general keeping with or in the same direction as it doesn't mean it has to be in lockstep with the comprehensive plan at every turn. And that's a kind of a finding of fact that you guys need to make before you proceed further and then look at the different characteristics for the zones that could be applicable here and make that decision. So the, the staff report, since I've been here, has, has done, has grown by leaps and bounds to discuss those goals and objectives and you can use those as a baseline. If you agree with those and say so, if you have differences of opinion, you can say that too. I just, as the person responsible for defending your guys' decisions, I just like for you to guys, for you guys to have a nice, robust discussion so that whatever decision you make is supported by good adequate evidence on the record. So, you know, focus on the comp plan first, then go to the criteria that we find mentioned in the staff report and, and see what you guys think. And I just always encourage you to vocalize your thoughts because this is being recorded and the transcripts can become valuable. Doesn't look like this one is a hotly contested file. But sometimes they can be. So the more thought you can put into your decision-making deliberation, then the better that is for me. Thank you.
Well, for me, I think the planning department has done their due diligence. The the commission has certainly done their due diligence. They brought a lot of helpful information forward. Doesn't appear that the wetlands is an issue or Corps of Engineers has never been shy at vocalizing that. So I think it's a fit. I think it's a good ideal. I'm for it.
As I'm looking at, or Mr. Chairman, man?
You may.
They're looking at it. It appears it's an existing use. The comp plan has been adjusted and amended. It is an appropriate use from my perspective in regards to the current use. It's a low impact. For the water, it is a manmade now and it it appears to be gentrifiable, but I'm open to a conversation.
So, okay, no, I was going to say that it, the comp plan supports the zone change that's requested. I think all the applicable issues and concerns have been addressed in the change itself. I, I do ask the question when people do give comments of, did we? I, I personally don't see anything wrong with looking a little bit more into a comment when we're talking about wetlands and water because it helps when you go to the next file sometimes to have addressed that and also to kind of address the negative outcome of that happens when neighbors have to pit against each other. But it doesn't change the validity that the request is in line with our comp plan of our goals of the area of growth and our infrastructure can support that change. So, but it's in my mind, I want to make sure I address that there is community input. Community input isn't necessarily right or wrong, but that was, and you clarified for me the wetland issue. I know that we do send that request out, but I always get that follow-up email about, well, did you ask? But I think that this is in line with it and it is beneficial to the community because we do need to attract more business, so.
And I think that that ditch has been in some other files sometime in the last four years. And that ditch is like older than me, I believe. And it was originally done for water runoff and they used it for irrigation. In fact, you know, when everything was farm out there. And so just wanted to add that in there. It's something that has existed for a long time. There haven't really been an issue one way or another, so. I think we're good there. Anything else?
No, I moved to approve this project file Z C zero zero one five dash twenty two. Requesting his own change from rule five to commercial, finding that it is in accordance with the general move this because someone will say something, that it is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions. Did I repeat that? Conclusions of law is set forth in the staff report or as amended during the hearing and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
I second that motion.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any real call vote on that part?
It's a real call.
I think it's
Or the ordinance.
I actually I always encourage roll call votes whenever there's a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Hey.
Also be one more, yes, there's an ordinance in there as well, right?
Zone change ordinance motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of the Bonner County, of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassification of lands located in section twenty four township fifty five north range six west Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho from rural five to commercial and providing for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
I second the motion.
The first and second roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And that will conclude that file. And we will move on to Z C one seven dash two two. Well, yours, Daniel.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon again, Commissioners, Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. We're here to discuss his own change from AF twenty to rural ten. Bonner County Revised Code twelve two sixteen, staff and governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there's adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Twelve dash three twenty point one, purpose statements for each designation is baked into our code that we must review the application against discussed earlier. So this is the rural district that they're hoping to accomplish today. The rural district is established to allow for low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. So a project summary, applicants are proposing a zone change from AF twenty to rural ten for the purposes of pursuing a boundary line adjustment, moving existing dwelling out of the flood hazard zone. The parcels are currently zoned AF twenty. Parcels are respectively five acres and just under twenty-two acres. They're located off Upper Pack River Road. Parcels are mostly flat with back river running through the west side of the properties. The parcels are parcels are either within a floodway or a flood hazard zone. The request was evaluated against the standard for AF twenty and rural ten district. These are the standards that are are expected of a piece of property. So looking at the AF twenty, we look to see if these parcels have primax soils or characterized by ag or forestry uses have limited services, is characterized by slopes steeper than thirty percent where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems where large tracts of land are devoted to ag forest production. In order to achieve the rural ten, the property needs to meet one or more of the following. It needs to be characterized by slopes that are steeper than thirty percent located within a critical wildlife habitat, contain prime ag soils, served by a network of public and private roads that do not meet roadway standards within a floodway and contain limited access to public services. So some background on these particular parcels, they're both unplatted. One property to the north is five acres, one to the south is just under twenty-two acres. It's currently zoned ag forest twenty and has a land use destination of prime forest land. Parcels are accessed off the Upper Pack River Road, which is a paved Bonner County Road six foot right away onto a private easement, which is a privately maintained easement. So these parcels have quite a bit of environmental features. The section here that we see in the red and the yellow is our slope layer as found on our mapping system. Areas here in the purple and the green are map wetlands. And this purple section here basically is the pack river. Just to give you an idea of what the color breakdown is here. So we can see that these parcels here don't contain any map slopes. It's all flat.
So both purple and are both wetlands?
There are different types of wetlands.
Okay, just to
There are wetlands, but different categories of wetland. Anyway, so we can see that there is map wetland on this property. It does contain waterfront because it is on the pack river. It is served currently, the north, northern property is served by an individual well and septic system. It's not within a fire district. It's not within a fire district outside of it. It is served by the VSS utilities and is within Lake Andre's School District number eighty-four. This is a closer look at the floodplain. The area that we see here in this pink or red color is the floodway. The area here in the blue is the flood hazard zone. This is a quote from our certified floodplain manager. As a certified floodplain manager and a planner of Bonner County, I strongly recommend approval of this proposed zone change. Proposed zone change and boundary line adjustment will serve better protect the life, health and safety of residents of the parcels without raising risks to other parcels. Whenever possible, Bonner County should encourage landowners to develop outside the special flood hazard area and floodways of Bonner County. This proposal will serve this goal. I've invited Mr. Johnson here this afternoon to speak further if need on his expertise of floodplain. That is a brief synopsis of his lengthy analysis of these parcels. So we're looking at the soils letters here. This whole area in purple is poorly drained. It is farmland of statewide importance. If drained, it either protected from flooding or not frequently flooded during the growing season. The area here in the green, which affects this parcel to the south is well drained, but it's not prime farmland as classified. This yellow here is the pack river. And it's not prime farmland. These are the agencies that were routed for comment. I had a Department of Water Resources, Bonner County Road and Bridge and DQ all submitted comments. N L, Panhandle Health District replied with no comment. All their agencies did not respond. No public comments were received on this proposal. Go back to the standards of review. We can see that there's no primac soils on this parcel. It's not characterized by ag or forestry uses. It does contain limited services. It's not characterized by slopes steeper than thirty percent. Where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems. It is not. Where, where large tracts of land are devoted to ag forest production. It's not. It just has to meet one or more of the following. So we've learned that the parcel is flat, so it's not steeper than thirty percent, so it doesn't meet that criteria. Not located within a critical wildlife habitat. Do not receive a comment from either one of those agencies. As we've learned, it does not contain any prime ag soils. Where it does meet this criteria, it is served by a network of public and private roads that aren't necessarily built to the road standard. And that would be the that'd be the estimate to the property. We've learned that it's within the floodway and it does contain limited access to public services as it's outside of the fire district. These are the finding facts. They have not changed since the time staff report was prepared. Nor have the conclusions of law. Staff has found that the zone change is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project. Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash three one five, the rules of interpretation for zoning district boundaries. Letter E, boundaries indicated as following shorelines shall be considered the following those shorelines and legally established standard lines. In the event of a change of the shoreline, boundaries shall be constructed construed, sorry, as moving with the actual shoreline. Boundaries indicated as approximately following the center lines of the streams, rivers, canals, lakes or other bodies of water shall be constructed to allow for those center lines. Letter G. Boundaries indicated following section or township lines shall be construed as the following in these sections or township lines. The reason why I bring this up is because when the map was done back in two thousand eight or adopted in two thousand eight. We can see down here where it's actually following the pack river. Somewhere along the way, and I don't know if they ran out of time, different staff members were working on the mapping. They decided to adopt the section line to split those boundaries. Just for a little bit of education, not just for this file, but other files moving forward. Why I bring it to your attention today. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
The arrow that's pointing down there when they were following the river, the green and the light blue, which ones, which zones are those?
Uh, right, so the white blue is all rural five. The dark blue is rural ten. And this is the ag forestry zoning district where there's nothing here that's typically government land. It's not itself.
Okay.
So the surrounding area is in line with the proposed change?
Uh, the the property should have been captured as R ten originally, when you look at what the code requires back here to meet that criteria of one or more. In essence, you're not going to be able to farm or plant any trees or anything in that floodway. Where you could do anything in basis here this afternoon to discuss it, but any manmade change inside there is okay. So you would take the forestry equipment in there to imagine cut down trees or or weed or I don't know what you could have grown there, you'd have to drain it because it's instead of be drained and protected from flooding and that's not possible if it's in flooded water. So it's another situation. Luckily we had two of them today that just don't meet the code as intended. And I thought it ended up that way, but.
Does provide a way to clean it up that way.
Correct, and the bigger picture here on this as well is their goal, and you can't see it. An applicant and applicant refs probably speak to this better than we can. But there's a home that's right here that is crossing this boundary line, this property line. So it's encroaching on this parcel here. The upside is this is family and they're willing to make some adjustments to accommodate this. The challenge here is you can't create a split zone property. That's why we're here for a demonstration this afternoon. So it doesn't allow for just to adjust a boundary line into a separate zone.
They own, but won't adopt that zone in itself. So that's why we have to, we have to ask for the zone change.
A little bit of an onion on this property and this project this afternoon. The goal is to move this home that's in floodway out of it.
Yeah, historically, we've seen where we find these little oddballs here and there that got overlooked or for some reason and never came up and was just not seen.
Correct.
And it provides a way to clean that up. And he owns both parcels, right? That boundary where the house is sitting in the middle?
Oh, two different property owners, my understanding it is family. And then so they're all working in concert to clean all this up and do the right thing and make it right. It's not for any purposes.
This is definitely out of it. All right.
But there's an applicant here and they don't know if the property owners are here discussing.
Any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Hey, applicant want to speak?
Actually, my house that's in the floodplain.
Oh.
My husband put the house down there in nineteen seventy-eight before anything ever happened and the river actually was what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Nancy Wright. Anyway, the purpose of this is to unscramble like a bowl of spaghetti because I would in all actuality like to build up by my barn, which is dry land. And the river now is actually running north and west of me. When we first moved down there, it was running completely west of us, but as everyone knows, pack river changes immensely every spring. We have flooded a few times, but not so bad that we had to move out of there, but I would like to move up and my daughter has, is working with me on that. And it's my brother-in-law who owns the other parcel of property. And it's primarily grazing land is what we use it for, so. I can't think of anything else that would affect it. It's just that we need to clean up this mess so that we can move forward. And originally it was that track of land was owned by Stimson lumber, which is why it was twenty acre. And when they changed the boundary and put in that line, we all of a sudden, our property was on Simpson lumber land, so we had to we actually had to buy that from them, but now we're in a point where we want to make it coherent with the rest of the property, so it all fits in. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. All right, thanks.
So. We got anybody online?
We have an applicant wrap there because
Oh. Take your name for reference. Be in the microphone if you can.
He has a presentation. I'm going to pull up.
Okay.
We're having some technical difficulties at the beginning, so.
Just knock Daniel out of the way.
Please do.
Just wait for him to get
Knock me out of the way. I'm an IT guy. Yes.
I didn't hear it. It's not good.
Uh, firming or say there's a way, we have a special relationship.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Katie. I am here on behalf of our clients, Nancy Wright, Grace Corser, Grace Ackerman, sorry, and Chris Corser, also Glady and Associates. And so this is just a brief location of the property. It's about ten miles up on Upper Pack River Road. Hi. Is it only four? Why do I have ten?
I was going to say ten miles, you're in boundary.
Oh, turn left after ten miles. So you follow highway ninety-five out of town. Yeah, sorry, guys. I'm a little nervous. Haven't done too many of these, so. I apologize. Okay, so here's a site plan that might help with the Commissioners a little bit and some questions you guys had earlier. Back going for, yes, so you can see kind of right in here. That is where Nancy's house is currently. And it definitely encroaches on this current boundary line. Eventually, well, what we would like to do, what they would like to do is a boundary line adjustment with these three parcels to create a property line that comes roughly this way, so that then Nancy will have an area to be able to build her home out of the floodway as well as Grace and Chris is going to help with that boundary line adjustment to make all of the parcels conforming to the ten acre minimum. Because that right now isn't being met either. So with the zone change, if that gets approved, then we're going to do a boundary line adjustment to make that four or five acre parcel conforming to what it needs to. Right now, twenty acres is definitely don't know what that is on my screen and I apologize. But here's our zoning map showing. All right, said I muted. Anyways, here's our zoning. We have the ag twenty-two right here and rural ten. Just kind of makes sense to approve it with it not meeting the zoning requirements. Our soils map. I outlined both of the parcels. You can see neither of the properties contain prime soils which are required for them to be zoned R twenty. You have the Cape Horn silt loam, just classified as farmland. If it's drained and protected from flooding or not frequently flooded during the growing season, which I think we could all agree is somewhat impossible with pack river. It also contains pondre silt loam, which is not classified as prime farmland and then just water. We did not receive any public comments. One, I got the staff report from planning. We had gotten a few agency comments back, most of which just said, no comment. So these next couple of slides are just going over what is required for our ten versus the R twenty. Just kind of help you guys realize the difference, not realize, sorry, that's not the right word. Just to kind of show you the difference between the two of them. So here we have ag forest twenty and rural ten. The requirements for ag forest twenty is to have slopes steeper than thirty percent. Prime soils, there's no standard for ag twenty as far as the floodway and you want large tracts of land devoted to ag forest production. Doesn't really meet any of those standards other than it being in a floodway. When you look at the R ten, it meets a lot more of the standards than it does for it to be R twenty. In conclusion, the subject parcels are suitable and they fit with the zoning goals and intentions. Again, no prime soils, no steep slopes. About it, guys. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions for engineering?
I have no questions.
Public comment? We have any public comment in favor of? And neutral of? Okay. Light them up.
You're not Dave.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, this is Susan Bowman, not Dave Bowman. And I have a question for staff. So on the slide where you are putting up the ag forest twenty and then I guess they want to go to rural ten and you're looking at the two different zoning designations. I'm wondering where does it say in the code that you have to meet one or more of the following to be able to change to that different zone? Or is that just a staff interpretation that you must meet one or more of the following? So if you want to go from ag forest twenty to rural ten, and so if you're going to do things like that, basically you can just pick any zone, any of those designations and say, oh, I meet one or more of these. I mean, maybe they meet one or more of, you know, R five. So the, that interpretation doesn't make a lot of sense. And then the other thing I would say is that this isn't a C of ag forest twenty, okay? And the code is very clear that the zoning designation lines were drawn per, when there, when there's a road, for example, and it gives you you know, the reasons why the zones would be drawn in the way that they are. And so I would ask staff to clarify, first of all, is it, does it say in the code that you have to meet one or more of a, of a different zone in order to do that? Are they interpreting that? That's what I would like to know. Thank you.
That's right.
Oh, Matt, Matt confident to answer that?
Well, perhaps. Matt let's got a signal. You know, when, when these maps were originally drawn, these zoning maps, I was there. We, we met twice a month for hours on end, but we didn't have computers. Uh, but we didn't have computers. We had maps about half the side of your desk there and they were plat maps. All we had were black lines. If you look back at those deeds and, cause I was looking at these deeds a while back, that whole area um, that's there in green was owned by Stimson Lumber. At that time, what we had done was we gone ahead and went through any of those large timber companies, DAW Stimson. We just gone ahead and put a twenty acre zone on them. So I think that is one of the reasons why that was originally uh, a twenty acre parcel back then. Um, I was, oh, and the comment that, that Susan made, you know, I was really curious about that too. So several months ago, I made a public records request on why we have these different zones and how we were to go ahead and facilitate on which attribute a piece of property has. And, and we've been doing exactly how that is set up in, in, in that public records request that I made. It was a letter from Marty Taylor to Claire Marley. And it says, what we need to do is we need to go ahead and such as slopes, county road facilities and gave a list of six or seven items. And then it ends with, and I'm summarizing here because I don't have it with me. We will allow the property owner to go ahead and prove on which zone it needs to be in. So that is how we got to where we are today. Um, that's the, ever since that very first zone file that we started back as soon as the, in, in two thousand eight, when we adopted it. That's the procedures we've used right on through. And it's that procedure that was set up in that public records request that the county done on Orange five oh one.
Thank you. Any other public comment or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm Grace Ackerman. I own the property right next to it. Um, the river runs right along that property edge. Everything on that side of the river is all R ten. Everything on the other side of the river is R twenty. So there's kind of a dividing factor there as well. It's not just kind of all mixed in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more comment or questions, I will close it in public comment and we will talk amongst ourselves. Who has a rebuttal?
The applicant's rep typically gets a chance to rebut in public comment.
Okay, is anything you want to rebut or did Matt answer that for y'all too?
It's in this case, it could. Um, there's very little public comment to rebut, um, short of a question that Susan raised. Maybe that might be a better question though for staff. Um, just. Um, you could do whatever the board asks you to do.
Yeah, if you want to comment on it or answer it.
If you'd like to answer the question.
Yeah, alright, well.
Thank you, Mr. Brett.
Or I, please, I would like to ask control.
Well, Daniel's doing that. I actually found the email, that letter. Alright, I read it. Oh, sure.
Okay, so this was an email and conversation between Marty Taylor and Claire Marley. Marty Taylor was a planning director at the time of the comprehensive plan. And then he left for greener pastures, but he was still very much involved with, with planning. Claire Marley took over as planning director.
Before you start, can I ask you to pull that up because that uh, she uh, we're having. Like, come please.
Maybe. Okay, there we go. Um, uh, Determining Rural Neg densities Board. Good zoning map meeting on December seventh. I've been thinking about through Todd and Joe's comments on densities, my suggestions of ways to identify lot minimums in the proposed rural ag district zones. The county developed six resource-based comp plan maps all based on natural resources. These undisputed land features gave rise to the comp plan classification adopted in two thousand and five. Um, the question is, is whether land that is proposed to be zoned ag or forest should be zoned tens or twenties? And same thing with rural fives and tens. I know that some landlords that are proposed to be zoned rural want to be suburban. And some that are proposed to be ag forest want to be rural. But I think the main issue is density with the proposed zone, not the zone itself. What with that premise, what if we simply try this? Does your property contain map egg? Does your property contain critical wildlife? And up attached, does your property contain map landslide areas? Does your property contain south and west facing slopes? Does your property contain that flood plain? Does your property contain map slopes of greater than three percent? If the answer is yes, or four of those six, then above density is tens in the rule. Uh, tens if rural and twenties if egg. If they answer, we can answer the yes and no to wetlands questions as well. Most of this has already been done. That's why the proposed zoning map identifies fives and tens of rural and tens and twenties and egg force in the first place. However, people that are more familiar with particular properties are still debating with the county these issues. Therefore, the map could just state rural and leave the lot size minimum up to the landowner to prove up whether it's fives or tens. Same with the ag district zones. So that's exactly the procedures that we've used ever since two thousand and eight when Orange five oh one was adopted.
Thank you.
So commissioners, if you look at the Bonner County revised code twelve dash three two three, rural district, if you start at the top and you start reading down, you'll eventually run into letter B and then you get into letter or number one, which says R ten, and this is straight out of the code, not staff's words. R ten in areas designated as rural residential in the comp plan that meet one or more of the following criteria. And we look at the listed criteria that were found in the presentation as well as the staff report to break down. And that's where the one or more of the following make the land suitable to be R ten in this case.
I think that we're talking about two separate issues because I don't think their property is really involved in this discussion. But I do, I do have a clarifying thing is it's within areas, not specific pieces of property. So we didn't, the county doesn't go out and test every piece of property to make sure that they meet those characteristics. But it's the zoning map in the area. And so you're drilling really far down um, to say that it's a specific property has to contain one because in that answer, it's the area that's designated as that. And that's why when they come in, you show the map and you say, does it mirror what we're looking at? It's not, that doesn't answer Susan Bowman's statement of where does it say that the specific property? And I think that's a discussion that's not really pertinent to their file, but it's one that has been going on with planning and zoning and the community with respect to zone changing. And that I think is where some members of the community feel like there's spot zoning happening, even though everybody hates that word. Because you look at one property to say it doesn't have all of those characteristics. Therefore, it switches to a different one instead of looking at the area that is in that zone. I mean, and you can give feedback on that, but I think that's, that's a, that's a difference between the two. But I also agree with Lynn Scott that for a lot of the files, that's what's happening. People are coming in and saying, I would like the change, but I don't think saying I don't have prime ag on this part of my land or this piece of property, therefore it changes is the, is what that, what that actually says. Because it's the area, not the piece. But I don't think that's the, that, I, I feel like on this particular file, this is a different case than the zoning.
There are these case by case basis of applicants coming in and wanting to discuss their property specifically. There's people that have probably owned property in this county for decades that have never thought about doing anything with their land other than, oh, I built my house and I'm going to live here till the day I die. And never give a second thought about zoning until they're curious about doing something with their property and they do calls up and we look at this and the particular criteria. Um, and we can stay specific to this and I think that larger conversation maybe for a different time, but um, yeah, there's lots of folks we talked to.
Oh, no, I, I get that.
So when we're looking at this area commissioner, like you mentioned, um, this African is like, let's look at my land specifically. And that's how we get where we are today.
I understand that, but I mean, is that as the answer to uh, Mrs. Bowman's question about the change itself when it's going from one.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman. There's a good question from the public, but I'm here to address the file on hand. Um, and I just say, this is a reminder so that I make sure that I'm staying on track. Are we currently in discussion and the public testimony is closed? Are we still in? I know it's.
Yeah, I haven't closed it yet, but.
I, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
We get back into the discussion or?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman, uh, Commissioners. Uh, this is Jason Johnson, Bonner County Planning for the record. Um, this file that we're looking at here today is quite a bit different from other rezone requests that we've seen. Uh, it's not very often that a rezone or any other file is going to come before you with an immediate pressing life, health and safety concern. Uh, this one does. Uh, the purpose of Lupa, the purpose of the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the zoning code is first foremost and primarily to protect the life, health and safety of Bonner County residents. Everything else is secondary to that. Um, we're not just requesting the read or the applicant isn't just requesting a rezone in this case, just to rezone property. It's the first step in a boundary line adjustment. We can't allow a boundary line adjustment across a split zone property. So we have to say no to the boundary line adjustment. This is the first step in a boundary line adjustment that's going to result in parcels that exist entirely within floodplain and floodway being adjusted so that a portion of them ends up outside. Now, they're not going to be required by law to develop outside. We can't do that. It is legal to develop inside floodplains, but this gives them an opportunity to develop more safely that they do not currently have. Um, and this is just the first step towards doing that. So this is quite a bit different from other rezone applications. You're not normally going to see this and I'm not normally going to be standing here saying life, health and safety matters in this case. But the vast majority of rezones, you'll see. Um, but in this case, I couldn't come to any conclusion other than that we're almost obligated to say yes because we're going to be protecting life, health and safety just for that reason alone. Um, it is a, it is a unique one-off case. Thank you.
So at this point, we will close for public comment and we will discuss amongst ourselves. For me, uh, it best serves those that are involved. It cleans up some stuff. Uh, Jason pointed out an excellent point. And uh, if you look at the Pack River, the whole deal. Uh, originally Stimson owned that piece, so they just left it. Everything else along there is rural and tens and fives and all up and down the river. You see small ones, big ones, in-between ones. And so I think it best serves not only the applicant, but it'll best serve the the confusion with the little oddball thing that's going on here and cleans it up, gives everybody a better option and it's the right thing to do.
I don't, I don't disagree. I think that this one is in line with our comprehensive plan and it's appropriate to make the change um, for all the reasons that uh, Jason stated. I think it's a unique piece. Um, and that it is best serving the owner of the property and putting in mind the safety of the owners as well and addressing the boundary line issue that has to be addressed.
I agree. It also leads to an important finding of fact and something that as a board and commission, we are going to need to address. Times have changed, land ownership has changed. And even the ground changes with the natural flow of water. And having the ability of the technology to be able to utilize GIS tools to serve the public as in this case, or a private citizen and their health and safety absolutely has my support, but it also speaks to the larger challenge that we have that we are going to address. You make a map that fits the topography using the tools of today instead of the map and the markers of yesterday. So I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion. Remember when you, so.
Time I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this project file ZC zero zero one seven dash two two, requesting a zone change from agricultural forestry twenty to rural ten. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report or as amended during the hearing and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in overtaking a private property.
I second the motion.
Alright, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassification of lands located in section fourteen township fifty-nine, North Range two, West Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, from agricultural forestry twenty to rural ten and providing for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. That includes that file.